Okay, go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our latest installment of the Board of Commissioners meeting. I want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting, so when you come to the microphone, say who you are and where you're from. And this is also being recorded, both video and audio. Awards, recognitions, and correspondence. I do have a couple of these. First one is subject to City of Milton-Freewater Chip Seal Project. I'd like to thank Tom Fellows, Brian Johnson, Corey Hardy, and all the Chip Seal crew for the outstanding job they did on the Chip Seal project here in Milton-Freewater. They worked great with our crew to cause minimal disruption of traffic, businesses, and residents. We'll pull that down to read this. "The city is extremely pleased with the quality of the chip seal on approximately 1.7 miles through downtown. The City of Milton-Freewater truly appreciates all the help Umatilla County has provided over the years to maintain our city streets on a very limited budget. Thank you again, and we look forward to working with you and your crew again in the future. Sincerely, Brian Stedman, Public Works Superintendent, City of Milton-Freewater." And we also have received another one from the Public Works Department. This one's from Sam Pambrin off of Pambrin Road. Says, "Tom, your crew showed up to clean the ditches on Pambrin Road in front of my house on 1st of October 2020. They were very thorough and efficient, and they were great guys. Thank you, and please thank your crew for me. I am grateful." Sam. And that was LG Bullock's crew on that one. So congratulations to the Road Department for that. Any other awards, recognitions, or correspondence from the other commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Acknowledgement of the minutes of previous minutes, October 7th, 2020. Bill, I think you're muted or something.
It's not muted, though.
I can't hear him. Can... Yeah.
This is open.
I hear someone over there. Is that where I'm hearing it from? Your computer?
Just a second. Second, please.
Try it now, Bill.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Ah, now we got it. Okay, we had a volume issue.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so I'm assuming Commissioner Murdock made the motion. We didn't hear it in here.
Thank you.
So, okay. All right, so we got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any additions?
Chairman, could you identify the parties on the line who are identified only by telephone number?
Okay, we have a phone number ending in 86, 541, ending in 86. We're good. We got it. Thank you.
Who is it?
The phone number ending in 86.
86, yes, that's who?
I don't know. I'm asking. They just unmuted. Who is 86?
Give me Sheriff.
Ah, gotcha. Who's this?
This is Andrew Sheriff.
Hey, Andrew Sheriff, how are you?
Oh.
Okay.
How's it going? How are you guys?
Fantastic.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yep. We hear you now.
Thank you.
Okay, then we also have, is that 82, or is that 32? 52?
52.
Good thing I'm wearing these glasses. Phone number ending in 52.
This is Stacy Coons, Transit Coordinator.
Ah, thank you, Stacy. Appreciate that. Is there any others on there? I can't see the screen. 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. Okay, that's it. Okay.
I do.
Okay. Any additions to the agenda?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, seeing none. Public input and recognition of visitors. Okay. Business items. Number one, the transit plan update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Walder, Umatilla County Planning Director. The action item before you this morning is adoption of the latest update to the Umatilla County Coordinated Human Services Plan. This plan is used to guide the investment of transit dollars to maximize the benefit to the elderly and people with disabilities within our area who utilize our transit system. The plan also provides transit providers with projects that they can apply for as part of the statewide transportation improvement fund, or STIF, or the Special Transportation Fund, STF, as well as other federal transit dollars. The plan was last updated in 2016, and the state requires updates to these plans every three years, and a full revised plan every five years. In 2019, Umatilla County had some remaining statewide transportation improvement funds that we used to enter into a contract with local consultants, Eastern Oregon Business Source. At the start of 2020, our consultants worked to complete the update to this plan, and we have it for you to review and adopt today. For the past few months, EOBs has been working with transit providers, members of the public, our SDIF and STF committees, to complete the plan update. With that, I'd like to introduce one of the consultants for this plan update, Mr. Nick Nash, as well as Umatilla County Transit Coordinator Stacy Coons. They're going to provide you with a brief overview of the updates that were made to the plan and some of the plan's recommendations. So I'll turn it over to Nick and Stacy.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Commissioners, for your time today. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Very good. So I just wanted to begin by thanking you all for the opportunity to update the Coordinated Human Services Plan. There's a few things that I personally like more than thinking about ways that we can strategically improve Umatilla County. So when gathering the information for this plan, our guiding principle was to include as many different voices as possible, and this was all against the backdrop of COVID-19, of course. So we held 10 virtual public meetings and received 67 responses to our online survey and communicated with and received feedback from a diverse range of stakeholders from across the county and from neighboring counties as well. So I think that the goals that we developed in this plan both give local transit providers a structure that they can use to work towards improvements to the transit system while at the same time being flexible enough to support anything that they might need or want to accomplish their individual transit goals. So following from a careful needs assessment, we established 18 goals to help improve transit in Umatilla County. Those are laid out in the introduction of the plan, but here I'm just going to highlight three. So the first goal I'm going to briefly talk about is Goal Three, improving driver recruitment and retention. So I bring this goal up just to keep it in front of mind. Finding qualified transit drivers is a tremendous problem, not just here in Umatilla County, but in fact, across the whole United States. One suggestion that's made in the plan is for providers to try to work together as best they can to try to find qualified drivers to help improve transit. The next goal I'd like to focus on is Goal Four, making information and advertising available in Spanish. So there is a limited amount of information and marketing material available for Umatilla County's Spanish-speaking community, and following from this, there's a need for information and materials, including schedule and route maps, to be made available in Spanish, as well as the need for culture-specific advertising. So these materials are also best distributed using slightly different methods, including Spanish-speaking media outlets, print and radio, and often directly from other community members. So one tremendous benefit for transit towards working towards accomplishing the goal is that it's going to inevitably increase ridership among those from the Spanish-speaking community and help make it a system accessible to as many residents as possible. In many ways, this is kind of one of those sort of low-hanging fruit. We have people in our community that would use transit if they had easy access to it, and this will help increase that access for them. The last goal that I want to focus on, because I think it's kind of exciting, is Goal Seven, working with IMESD to reduce chronic absenteeism. So this goal's exciting because it allows those working in transit to make what's often presented as a problem, right, chronic absenteeism, and turn it into an excellent opportunity for the transit system. So by working to educate kids across the county on alternative ways to get to school if they happen to have missed their regular school bus, what we end up doing is creating lifelong transit users. So I think this is an excellent opportunity to turn what is often thought of as a negative thing into a positive thing for the transit system. So one last item that I wanted to highlight is the creation of the Umatilla County Transit Coordinator position, and Stacy's here with me today in case she needs to answer any questions, but also the unique public-private partnership that allowed the creation of this position to make sense for Umatilla County. So the transit coordinators made tremendous progress helping county transit providers work towards the goals that were outlined in the previous plan, and I have no doubt that the transit coordinator will be instrumental in helping accomplish many of the goals that are laid out in this new plan that we bring to you today. But we think also that the public-private partnership between Umatilla County and Eastern Oregon Business Source is sort of at the center of this success, and that partnerships like this are an excellent example of the type of innovation that I personally come to expect from Umatilla County. So thank you for your time and attention, and I just wanted to ask if you have any questions about the transit plan.
Nick, I think it might be helpful to highlight at least some of the major highlights of Item Four on the table comments as progress since the previous plan, other than just formation of the effort.
Yeah, yeah. So when assessing, so as Commissioner Elfring brings up, in the fourth section of this plan, one of the things that we did was consider the progress that had been made since the previous plan. And in fact, here, what I would point to is the creation of the STIF transit program by the State of Oregon. So something that we found in our assessment is that the goals that interacted with the STIF commitments were the ones that were most easily accomplished by transit providers. So a great example of this, I think, is the making the route from Grand County down 395 through Ukiah to Wauwauwa. Fair free for residents of Umatilla County. This, before residents of Umatilla County had to pay, now they can just catch the bus in Ukiah and take it into Wauwauwa. And this is actually the single regular transit route that's available in Ukiah. Another highlight that followed, I think, is the development of the work transportation opportunity in Hermiston. So that was also paid for with STIF dollars, and that allows people living on the west side of the county to have an easy ride to work and to home using the local taxi company.
Thank you. I think it's important to point out two goals, fire to seven and the eight goals. The public outreach, I think, in order for transportation to be widely accepted, it needs to be more known about it and more people aware of it so that they will begin to utilize it. Once you get a good quarter of people utilizing it, I think the word about it will spread through word of mouth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you bring up a nice point, Commissioner. So definitely something, especially in rural Oregon, that we have to think about is how to communicate to people that transit exists at all. And sort of the way that I think about it is that what we need to work towards is making transit just an integral piece of our communities so that we're no longer asking, "Do we have transit?" We just know it's there, in the same way that if you're in a city, you know that there's a city bus somewhere.
Nick, I've got three questions.
Okay.
The first would be, when you indicated you have a problem recruiting drivers, is that because, I mean, I know employment isn't that high, is the salary not high enough? Do they not want to do it? Why do you have trouble?
Yeah. So it's a combination of things. Certainly, part of it is the salary. I think that part of it, honestly, is that we've been also going through a sort of slow shift over time. So a lot of the programs, when they were originally developed, would often use volunteer drivers. And so there's been a shift from volunteer drivers, of course, to paid drivers. And recruiting paid drivers requires different kinds of things to focus on. But certainly, I think pay is part of it. I think that kind of depending on the route, it can be maybe a less desirable job. And honestly, I think that another part of it is that the transit providers are kind of working as independent islands, right? And so they're all sort of recruiting independently for their own needs, and that kind of spreads out who they can reach and how easily.
Such a question. About the time COVID came and they shut down, I saw what I thought was a pretty creative advertising plan, or I don't know whether it was a diagram or what it was, that reflected all of the participants that was going to be used for advertising the program. Where is that right now?
So I'll be honest, Commissioner, I'm not quite sure what you're referencing. So I don't know.
I don't know whether the student showed to Jimmy or what, but it was a diagram showing the trademark or whatever it was for all the different participants that were going to be used.
Yeah. So maybe you're referencing EO Go, which is a... So Stacy has created a website, eogod.org, which brings together all of the transit providers across the county in one easy-to-locate website that's nice to use. This was actually another one of the goals that's been accomplished since the previous plan. So that's, my guess is that that's what you're referencing, and that's located at eogod.org.
That sounds like what I was talking about. I just hadn't ever seen it since, when it was first presented, it was kind of neat. I just haven't seen it since.
Yeah.
Third question is, you were talking about expanding the ridership and reaching out to groups particularly, I say minority groups, as you're talking about language facility. When you were looking at reaching out to those groups, did your survey also include where it is that they might want to go?
So, somewhat. So I think that the way to think about how these groups, which I identified as our Spanish-speaking community members, want to use transit is, quite frankly, often in the way that anybody else in the system wants to use transits, right? So they want to use it, of course, to get to the grocery store, to get to the doctor, to get to work, to get across town to see a friend. And so there certainly are some differences in the way that we need to reach out to these community members, but there's not so much difference in the way that they use transit.
Nick, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion.
Could you accept the update?
Will that motion be held, or I need to make the motion?
Yeah, I would move to accept the transit plan update.
I'll second it.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I guess the motion should have been to adopt Order BCC 2020-075.
That is nice. You're nice, man.
Okay. Burn ban, lifting of the burn ban. Is that... Are you presenting that, Doug, or...
Or I don't know, Bob.
Or is... Oh, yeah, Bob's on the phone, isn't he? Did you want to do that one, Bob?
I can. The, as you guys know, the burn ban was put into effect earlier this summer, as we traditionally do during the summer months, due to dry conditions and wildfire season. Since then, we believe conditions have improved enough, and with snow and rain in the forecast, we thought it was time to lift the burn ban. So that's the action item before the Commissioners this morning.
Mr. Chairman, I demand a lifting of the temporary ban on burning in Umatilla County and move approval of Order BCC 2020-073. Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Human services, electronic records. And I believe Amy is on the phone.
I am. Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. You can see me, too.
Yes.
Amy Ashton-Williams, Director, Human Services. So before you is some information. We are looking at moving from one electronic health record to a new electronic health record. There is an implementation cost for that, which we actually yesterday received a check from GOVEOCCO to help cover for that implementation cost. The monthly fee for this electronic health record is approximately the same of the one that we currently use, and we're just asking to change over. This new electronic health record actually speaks to the state system much better so that we can give accurate reporting to the state.
And how will that affect billing purposes?
One of the things that it does for billing with this new electronic health record, it's fully integrated with our clearinghouse. So instead of sending information to the clearinghouse, downloading it, uploading it, and then going back to the clearinghouse and bringing it back into our current EHR, this is totally integrated. We'll be able to see which claims have already been filed and which ones have been accepted and/or denied immediately. With the state reporting, we'll be able to see what state reports have been sent and accepted and/or denied. Right now, our current one, we'd have to wait for the state typically at the end of every month to find out which information has been transmitted and received and not transmitted.
Amy, this comes at an annual cost of $60,000. What was the cost of what we had available to us previously?
Yeah, so right now, we pay about the same price, Commissioner Elfring. I did just speak with the new electronic health record and asked for a few of the bells and whistles to be taken out because we don't need... We don't need a couple of those bells and whistles, so it may actually come in annually around a little under $60,000. But it is equivalent to what we're currently paying for our electronic health record now.
And it will be more usable by your department and more accessible?
Yeah, easier billing, more accurate state reporting, which right now, I spend on a quarterly basis about two days updating those quarterly reports because what we're giving to the state is not completely accurate, so I'll do some workaround reporting to make sure it's accurate.
If there were no other questions, Mr. Chairman, move approval. Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. ATV purchase. Sergeant Gregory.
Sergeant Gregory, Umatilla County Sheriff's Office. We're proposing a... In 2019, the Sheriff's Office applied for an ATV grant from the Oregon Parks of Recreation to purchase two new ATVs for our ATV program. We are awarded that cost of $24,000 to purchase two new ATVs. The last time the Sheriff's Office actually received two new ATVs was in 2010, and the current ATVs that we have are essentially ending their duty cycle. They're starting to get a little more costly in repairs. We're still going to keep them on staff and use them supplementally with our SAR program and the addition. The ATVs that we're looking at currently and are putting out to bid is the Yamaha Grizzly EPSXTR. They'll be equipped with factory-installed winches, cargo boxes, and brush guard. After reviewing several other models, we found that the Yamaha, because of their reliability, and that they best suit our needs.
And that... So that was a grant, too, right? So it's not coming out of general fund?
No. We do have a 20% matching on that, which would be approximately $5,000, where the Oregon Parks is 19 with the initial funds.
Was that where it came from, is Oregon Parks?
Oregon Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, okay. Wow.
As I understand it, from what you said, the two ATVs that are being replaced will be retained and will be placed into duty and some other function. Could you repeat that really quick for me?
Correct. Yes, we'll use those in our SAR program, our search and rescue program, and they'll also be continued to be used with our ATV program. As you know, in the last year, we hired two full-time officers, and we've nearly doubled our hours of patrolling in our OHV parks and additional roads within the forest areas.
I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that, by the way.
Yeah, like I said, our hours have nearly doubled.
Yeah.
Our presence in the forests and on the trail systems have been just tremendous. And in fact, the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department has noticed that our patrols have actually increased, and they're very happy with that.
Well, I'm huge in favor of this, but I'd really be in favor of the thing you would have went with Hondas instead of, you know, yellows, but whatever.
Mr. Chairman, I would move authorization to issue the invitations for Bill. Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sir, if I can just weigh in for a minute?
Oh, absolutely, Under Sheriff. My apologies.
No, no, I just wanted to recognize Sergeant Gregory for the great work he's done to identify this grant, as well as the grant that we use every year to provide those patrols. This is an additional supplemental grant to that grant, so I just wanted to recognize him for his work. He's done a great job in taking this grant, as well as our other patrols and D overseas. The ATV program for us, and again, has been doing a great job. So thank you, Adam.
Thank you. Thank you for interrupting. That's great. Congrats, Adam. That's awesome. Okay. Do we have anything else from the Sheriff's Office, or is that it? That's it, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Controlled access for new office.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Laney, with Director of Human Services for Umatilla County. And before you is a proposal to put in a controlled access, or also what we would call a pub access for the new A&amp;D office, similar to what we have at the courthouse and several of our other buildings, that now they'll be able to fob into the building, get entry into the building. They have a confidential area where the mailroom, in a sense, is, so they can fob and track who's going in and out of there to grab faxes and different items to keep them... different items, to keep it also safe away from clients getting into there, and it also allow them to buzz clients into the, from the waiting room, and that is through a local contractor, Unitech Communications, and it is $7,419. Amy, um, Ashton Williams has, is on board with this, wants to move forwards with it and, uh, has the fund in line item 54, P7-I3, port 50, so we'd like to move forwards with this and also increase their security and accountability for HIPAA and the safety of their clients to, and, uh.
Is all of Human Services now in the Brown Building?
Uh, they're in, or not, they're in the Bowman Building, well, they have the Bowman Building and then they have the Sam Cooke Building and they have the Mountain Water Broadway Building, now everybody in, now Amy, we have to answer this, but everybody in the Bowman Building will be moving to the Brown Building, which supposedly around the middle of next month will be our, is our tentative move date. Uh, one other thing I was going to add on there, two commissioners, this allows, uh, IT to be able to get in after hours to replace routers or switches and do some network and, um, maintenance that they have to do, some sort of after-hours work to do without interfering with them, uh, wouldn't allow us into their offices, it just allows us to the IT room, um, for that equipment, right now, it's kind of difficult for us to work around them because we don't have access in the open after-hours.
Since you're in charge of maintenance, I don't know if that's who's going to do it, would you also just create provisions for handicapped access to that facility, both for their clients plus veterans?
Um, so you said write provisions or make sure there's provisions?
Handicapped provisions, handicapped access.
They are supposed to be putting a ramp into the front door to get into that building.
That's correct.
That front door.
Yep, that's correct.
Amy's still in the line.
No, she had to get off for another meeting.
When I talked with them, when we did the tours, they were supposed to provide handicap, we were double-checked and made sure that they had provision for them to enter and egress the building plus, uh, the restroom, so we double-checked on that.
And that will be done, my understanding, my understanding is that will be done before move-in.
They are doing that. I think both you and John were talking at the same time, Commissioner Elfring.
I, I, I saw communications, uh, from Amy in the past day that, that is on her agenda to do, that they do have that planned, to have a ramp into the Brown Building?
Yep.
Yes, because it is a high priority because of our disabled veterans is a, a big, um, user of that facility will be, so, but yeah, we'll double-check and make sure.
Yeah, I, I know there's public, public concern or public awareness that there is not currently handicapped access to that facility, now we're not occupying it, but I don't think we should occupy it until that provision is in place.
That's right, Commissioner's correct, yes, it's, there's about a six-inch step up to get just into the door, so it is not designed, as it is sitting right now, it's not accessible, so yes, we will make sure that that is before we move in.
I realize I've taken you away from your original request, but I want, I want that to be a matter of record that we will not occupy the building without handicapped access, so with that, I'll move, we, we approve your request.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion carries, Dan, I think you're still up.
Yes, we have, before you, the next item is the payable for the ballots, uh, this year, the ballots total printing cost is $19,597.99, which is above our 5,000, um, amount that we have to have board approval, it's a, an ongoing expense that we have for every election, it's, uh, the total cost, we, uh, have over 46,000 registered voters, I have kept up with, current number is over 46,000 right now, and, um, this is within a few hundred dollars of our primary election cost of ballots.
Dan, I know I'm putting you on the spot a little bit with this, but, uh, any idea of what our return is so far for this current election?
I don't know the current percent, but, um, we have already, it's, it's been crazy, uh, we have received lots of ballots, uh, the last two times I opened up the, people just received the ballots Thursday and Friday, the last two times I picked up the ballot in Mountain Free Water, um, the box just floods open, it's just completely stuffed full, so, um, and that's how all of our ballot boxes are, are right now, so people are really using the drop boxes and we're, we're getting a lot of early voting going.
Wow, good, fantastic.
Mr. Chair, move approval of this action.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Computer purchase payable for public health.
Yeah, so, uh, again, Commissioners, this is, um, yeah, I think we have several payables coming up here for all proposed computers, which are for computers requested for either health or other departments to help with the issue of doing everything remotely and conferencing, video conferencing, so they have, the Health Department has purchased 10 more laptops for, uh, the COVID Tracking Center and that's a total of $1,237.97, and again, these are bought through, uh, local, um, business, uh, priced computers in Mountain Free Water.
Are these paid for with CARES dollars? CARES funds?
Yeah, they're coming out of the, um, well, um...
Or are these coming from the public health dollars that they received?
There, there's one, I think, that is coming out of, no, all the laptops are coming out of the CARES fund, there's a few other miscellaneous items on there for like UPS and cables, which are just coming out of their regular office, um, uh, computer, non-capital outline, and those are for other office items, so 99% of this payable is all coming out of our CARE line item.
I, uh, notice that the, um, there are several items on the agenda that, that relate to COVID, uh, funding, um, my understanding is that the COVID funding for the county are, have been, have been utilized fully and there were noth, and there's nothing left, uh, this may be a question for Robert or Marie if they're in the room, and I can't tell on my, uh, view of the room who's there and who's really not, but...
Yeah, Robert's coming up right now, Bill.
Is the utilization of COVID funding totally expired, totally been used, and is that used only for this round of funding, uh, the, my understanding is it's coming in waves and there will be another round of funding, uh, where are we looking for these funds to come from? Is Robert there, if not, I'll answer.
No, he's at the microphone waiting.
Uh, good morning, um, that's a multi-level question, um, we, uh, had an initial contract with the state for CARES funding that, uh, General County used, um, it was, uh, in the neighborhood of $3.2 million, that money, money has all been, um, claimed and there's no further funding there, not certain whether the state will have another round of, uh, um, the coronavirus relief fund, however, the Health Department gets another, um, stream of funding, uh, so certainly, these, uh, computers that are for, uh, COVID tracking will come through that funding, um, as far as I know, that hasn't been completely expended yet, um, we continue to track anything related to COVID, uh, separately in case there is another round of funding from the state or from the feds, but right now, we're, uh, we're just doing the best we can, but we have expended all of the CRF money that was originally allocated.
So for example, those that are not destined for public health, uh, that are COVID-related will merely be noted and they'll come out of the general fund for the, for the, for, for now, and if there is a fourth round funding approved, then submissions at that time, is that correct?
Uh, more or less, um, obviously, a number of different departments that are not general fund are still spending money to address the coronavirus issue, and so th, those monies are coming out of their, uh, their funds, um, if we are availed another opportunity to, um, get more funding, um, they will be reimbursed for that, but right now, the monies are, the monies are being charged and, and tracked in case we have an opportunity to receive more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had you, Robert's saying, last report we got is that 44% of the money that was allocated for cities and counties in Oregon has been spent and claimed at this time, now we're at 100%, but the statewide total is 100%, so know that, uh, there's a possibility that if that money is returned to the state, uh, there's an effort to have it redistributed, uh, where it's needed, and Robert and Marie are, are doing a very great job of, of carefully keeping track of everything we're spending, the, the other thing is that, that we also are aware that any cities that do not use their, their, uh, CARES allocation, uh, maybe give that allocation to the county, and so, we have communicated with every community in Umatilla County, asking that should they have leftover CARES money, uh, that they return it or give it to, to the county, and, and they have responded positively. Well, there has been positive response? Yes. Okay.
Okay, thank you Commissioners, I, I think we need a motion, oh.
Second.
Dan, did you want to trade places? So we have a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We have a couple more on here too that are similar related, the next one on here, Commissioners, is again, $14,807.00 for priced computers for more, uh, laptops, and this is for the executive team, finance, HR, legal counsel, all the commissioners, and, um, some of the other departments planning and our election and records make sure that, uh, they are able to function in, um, as we do remotely and if we are quarantined to different items, so precautionary measures and, and also just to keep going in the current state we are, and so that's what this is, the plan is for.
Well, I'll make that motion and I'll also compliment Dan, uh, mine is no longer sitting on my shelf in my office, I actually have engaged it for, for remote work and, and you put everything on there and I appreciate it, so, uh, I've been used, so I make that motion.
Second.
So, I'm glad somebody taught you how to use that calendar feature too, so...
I did that all by myself.
Liar. It's a good thing you're in your office, so you don't see your pants on fire, so...
I just want it hanging around so I can get used to it before I actually used it.
Ah, the old, uh, learn by osmosis, got it. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Maintenance payable.
So, the next one, we have one after this, two that's, I guess we'll, we'll get that in a second, this one is for the renovation on the third floor for the doors for the new offices, with, with COVID as a result, we are not, uh, having regular court in Hermiston, we're only having jury trials, which requires the VA's office to do most of their court hearings here, so this, that are usually in Hermiston are now being located here, and there was not office space for them to conduct their business, so we have created the extra office space for them on the third floor, and this is a payable for supplying the doors for each of those offices, and it's over the $5,000 mark, it's $8,903.
Dan, a question, I, I know we bought this merchandise along the way out of Umatilla County from Springfield, Oregon, uh, was there not material available or that could be produced by a local vendor?
Well, we usually, uh, deal with the, uh, local for in Peloton CH glass, and I think with the eye frame and estrange, what they could supply, because they're, they're actually older act, um, with COVID, they've been super busy, I mean, that shields everywhere, so, we went through them, they weren't able to accomplish this, so, um, that's, that's why we moved out of our local area there.
Remove approval, second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion carries.
Then the last one I have here, Commissioners, is the laptop for district attorneys, again, to price computers, and the same thing, moving their, their attorneys that are moving back and forth to Hermiston here, and their old laptops are Windows 7, which is no longer supported, and a security risk, so at the same time, we need to upgrade those, so this isn't out of the COVID money for these, uh, this is just planned, um, updating those computers from Windows 7 to Windows 10, those laptops, and it's $6,780 to price the computers.
Mr. Chair, just for benefit of those who are following the agenda, uh, we'd be moving to number, oh, eleven, will we be coming back to number 10 then?
Yeah, sorry, I jumped ahead on you guys, but, yeah, number 10's a lot behind, so...
Hmm, I'm trying to find that one anyways, I don't see that, oh, here it is, it's buried.
Yes, it's right on the bottom.
Yeah, no, I was looking for the pinky, I found it.
I apologize, I was on a roll, so I got them all listed out in front of me, and I was just going down.
Next.
Okay, so we're actually on the computer payable for number 11 for the district attorney, that's where we're at.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I, I'll give you one.
Okay, I've got a motion, did I hear a second somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you Commissioner, sorry about that confusion, but, uh, I, I'm done now.
Okay.
I have a question before you leave, are we, are we shopping around, are we eating the best price we can for those computers, I know it's extremely competitive.
So we actually do shop our state contract at the same time, and price computers, um, most of the time is pretty much spot-on and able to get the same pricing, on a few ones that are on special sale, um, we can get those cheaper online, but, uh, these regular ones, they've been doing basically the same price, so...
And we want to, want to have it be in a position where they can be also maintained or parts provided and so on?
Right.
I just think it's deep we're buying in Mountain Free Water.
I agree. I actually coached those guys in tennis back in the day, so... Okay, so we voted on that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so the next one is the public health payable, EO Media Group.
Yeah, Commissioner Murdock, did you want to go on that one?
No, I'll let go. I'll add to his comments.
Okay, what's before the board is payable to EO Media Group, this is for the COVID-related, uh, public, uh, education and advertisement, including the masks that were put in the newspaper, and due to the dollar amount, it's before the board for approval, so seeking approval to pay the EO Media Group, uh, $86,325.04.
I think they approved that payable. Hold on a second, I'd like to ask a question, I, I think we already approved that, we approved the program, we just haven't approved the payable, uh, there's been, there was an awful lot of good stuff came out of this one with the, uh, the information that has been provided to the public, uh, was this, again, getting back to the COVID funds, was this already taken out of the COVID funds, so we have money reserved to pay this, this bill?
Robert's coming up.
Good morning, Commissioner Elfring, this is Robert Paul, uh, that money will be paid through the Health Department's funding, uh, which I believe is ample to cover that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need, I need to, we actually initiated that program some time ago. And, and that's the one I think you know where, where masks and, and other things were distributed in two languages all over the county. Plus include, also include all those ads about people wearing masks and really was a, and we also got extra masks that were distributed. So it was, it was a neat deal.
I think it was a marvelous expenditure of money to do in line of the circumstance. So it's been, uh, we, we got the motion and I think I seconded it.
Yep. So is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? What was that? Okay, motion carries. Supplemental budgets, public hearing mode. So we are going into public hearing mode now for supplemental budgets. Take it away.
Good morning. Uh, this is Robert Paul with the CFO from Umatilla County, uh, with a staff report on the budget, uh, proposed supplemental budgets. I will, uh, summarize them for you. Uh, Budget Order Two-O-Two-One-Dash-Zero-Two, uh, General Fund Tax Collector Program, uh, requires a supplemental bun, budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of three thousand dollars and an increase in materials and services of three thousand dollars. Budget Order Two-O-Two-One-Dash-Zero-Three, General Fund Communityal Disease Program, uh, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars and an increase in personnel services of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Budget Order Two-O-Two-One-Dash-Zero-Five, Human Services, the school-based mental health program, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease, decrease in personnel services of ninety-six thousand dollars and an increase in transfers out of ninety-six thousand dollars. Budget Order Two-O-Two-One-Dash-Zero-Six, the Fair Improvement Program, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of nineteen thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of nineteen thousand dollars. Budget Order Two-O-Two-One-Dash-Zero-Seven, Community Justice Treatment Court Program, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, an increase in state revenue of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars, an increase in federal revenue of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, fifty-four dollars, and an increase in materials and services of five hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. Budget Order Two-O-Two-One-Dash-Zero-Eight, Economic Development Reserve, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of one thou, one million, five hundred thousand dollars and an increase in materials and services of one million, five hundred thousand dollars. Budget Order Two-O-Two-One-Dash-Zero-Nine, Wind Farm Distribution, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of one million, five hundred thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of one million, five hundred thousand dollars. Budget Order Two-O-Two-One, um, Twenty-Fifty Plan, oh, Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-Ten, Twenty-Fifty Plan Central Water Project, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of forty-five thousand dollars and an increase in materials and services of forty-five thousand dollars. Budget Order Two-O-Two-One-Dash-One-One, Capital Projects Stafford, Stafford Hansel Government Center, requires a supplemental budget to adopt, to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of forty-seven thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of forty-seven thousand dollars. Budget Order Two-O-Two-One-Dash-Twelve, Capital Projects Milton Free Water Facility Improvement Program, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of forty-eight thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of forty-eight thousand dollars. And Budget Order Two-O-Two-One-Dash-Thirteen, Capital Projects Courthouse Facility Improvement, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of twenty-three thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, those are the supplemental budgets before you this morning.
Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, any public comment or questions? I'm looking at you, Dan. Okay, seeing none, we will exit public hearing mode. And.
Mr. Chair, in light of Mr. Alfreding's long career in the public address announcer, I'll let him get the announce of the motions and I'll second.
Now, you can always do your throat loss, George, and, and do that. Mr. Chair, move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty, Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-O-Two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-O-Two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion carries.
Move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-O-Five.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-O-Six.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-O-Seven.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-O-Eight.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-O-Nine.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-Ten.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Two-Dash-Eleven.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-Two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-Thirteen.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries.
I presume to know that once Commissioner Alfreding retires, we have yet another radio personality who will still be with us, Commissioner Schaefer. So take a little tour from Commissioner Alfreding.
Oh, wow, I see the train coming.
Your radio show, George, and, and their policy comments, so. I'm sure you can do this.
Number thirteen, budget transfers. Or transfer, is the only one?
Good morning. There is, uh, one appropriations transfer for you, before you this morning. It's Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-Zero-Four for foreclosed property. And it requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. And this requires an increase in transfers out of three thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of three thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, move approval of Budget Order Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-O-Four.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Wild Horse Foundation, number fourteen.
Could be a combustible engine here.
I can present that if you wish. Uh, we, uh, need to make a nomination. My term has expired and we need to make a nomination, uh, to the Board of Trustees. Actually, we don't have the authority to, to appoint anyone to the board. We only recommend to the Board of Trustees of the tribes, uh, who we would like to have represent the county on that, uh, Wild Horse Foundation Board. Uh, I have served, uh, several terms and have indicated to them that I, uh, would at this point in time, uh, choose to step down to go that we, we have someone new participating. And so, uh, I move that Commissioner Schaefer, uh, his name be forwarded to the board for approval.
I would second the motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Okay. Uh, fifteen, vehicle lease. I can talk to that one. Uh, my current vehicle, having been handed down to me from two prior commissioners, is getting long in the tooth. So approval is sought for lease of a new vehicle for the BOC to replace the vehicle. Uh, it would be through the Enterprise Fleet Management and the Matters Before the Board for Approval Due to the Amount.
And, uh, this, under the fleet program, will, will go to Enterprise, will it be spoke of the old car?
Actually, I believe this old car is gonna go to, last I knew, is gonna go to the Extension Service.
Very good. I would move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries.
I, I object to the term long in the tooth, if you don't mind.
My apologies to my, to the senior statesman.
For as long as it wasn't being referred to me.
Uh, board meeting schedule. Okay.
Okay, um, this is before the board to reschedule the second meeting in November at the ALC Virtual Conference. Uh, the morning is unavailable for the meeting. And the proposal is just to move it from its usual time at nine o'clock to one-thirty on the afternoon, November eighteenth.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries.
I had not noted the, uh, I thought it was, I was looking at it. When I looked at it, I thought it was a, a different date. We'll be moving to the afternoon. That'll be a novelty.
Of all those meetings, I can't, I can't wait to have a three-day Zoom conference, but, uh, at least they end at noon.
Yeah, in theory. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Alfreding.
Well, not a great deal of report. Uh, we do have a meeting on Thursday regarding the CDA. And we'll be, uh, discussing further the, uh, the issue of the property on the depot and, and how it will be disposed of. That matter being, as I understand it, they have on the agenda and, uh, walked back to a point where the CDA, uh, will discuss how the future of the property will be, will be allocated at the point that, that the seven years expire. As most of you know, it's, uh, we see in property for, for the seven years, all seven years, following the date of transfer. But there is some discussion on how to proceed with the development of it after that date happens. It points to development or did point to development, uh, during the seven-year period as well. So there's considerable discussion that, that needs to occur there. I will be meeting, uh, tomorrow with, uh, Anderson Perry and, and the Executive Director, Greg Smith of the CDA regarding the wastewater project. As you may have heard, the CDA has, has, uh, put up twenty-five thousand dollars to assist in the feasibility study to see if that's a, a feasible project. So we're going to be discussing with Anderson Perry tomorrow exactly what feasible means and, uh, what would need to be included in that report. He will come back to us with the price, uh, that he thinks he could do that project for. And we will, uh, see how that compares to how far the twenty-five thousand will go. So that's, that's up for tomorrow's agenda. I think that pretty much covers the waterfront for me. We have had an awful lot of interest expressed in the election, uh, from people. Just had a phone call this morning asking how, how somebody should vote. And I said that the way they should vote is to read their voter's pamphlet. Um, go online, check the, uh, the candidates. That the Board of Commissioners do not make a recommendation. We cannot. It's just, we, it's not what we do. So that's working okay. Uh, it'd be interesting, as you, I think, Commissioner Schaefer commented this morning, that by our next board, board meeting, we will know who the new commissioner will be.
This is correct.
Question for counsel, but due to the magnitude of, of the issue that the CDA is considering, uh, and due to the concern of the commissioners, uh, about that issue, uh, would we want to memorialize our, uh, feelings on the matter?
Uh, yes, that'd be a good idea. So that way the commis, yes, that would be a good idea. That way the representative commissioner can report that to the full, uh, CDA board.
Well, then I would move that we, uh, we should have the, the property, uh, given over to the county, uh, and that that motion be walked back. Is that, is that sufficient?
Uh, that should cover it.
I would, uh, in, in a matter of discussion, I would prefer that the matter come back into the hands of the CDA. And it's an opportunity. I think I, I full well recognize the position of the board and the commissioners on that. But that, that property, if the, if the motion is that it would, that it would vest at the end of seven years in Umatilla County, uh, I don't think I, at this point, I would support that any more than I would support that it would vest in the hands of the, of the Board of Umatilla. I think it needs to be resolved. We, the CDA is a partnership of, of five partners, each of whom hold a twenty percent undivided interest in the direction of the, of the depot property when it transfers. I would prefer that, that we not say that it would vest in the, in the county.
So you're saying you would refer to, to go back to the CDA and not to the county or to the port?
Yes, I, I, that it, that it be a matter to be resolved by the CDA. My, my contest, my, my difficulty with the motion that was made in, in the CDA meeting was that it was to memorialize that the property would, would be dated to Port of Moro, or Port of Umatilla and the Port of Moro. Which I did, I was, that entire discussion was, has not been approached yet as far as how to proceed with the property after the property transfers. We know how, how it's going to be dealt with. And that is that it, it will be in the hands of the CDA. They cannot leave the hands. If it's distributed to the, if it's dated to the port, dated to the county, dated to Port of Moro, dated to Umatilla County, uh, Moro County, dated to the CTUIR, any of that type of action, in essence, from my viewpoint, predestines the distribution of the property and the dissolution, uh, seven years hence of the CDA. That kind of a vote requires five votes, not, not one vote or two votes. So I think understanding, Commissioner Murdock, where, where you're coming from and what your concern is, my concern is there as well. I'm very concerned about where the development occurs, how it occurs, who's going to, to lead the way on it, who's going to coordinate it. And I just don't think we're to that point yet. But it would come back to us, should it, uh, come to this kind of a vote. Uh, I, I believe legal counsel has already given that indication. And in order for this kind of a vote at the, at the CDA that was proposed, for it to, to move forward, requires each of the five members to agree to it.
I, I'm.
Our motion at the CDA was, was, uh, done with the idea that apparently at some point in time, there was a longstanding, uh, understanding that it were to go to the courts. And I would, at the very least, and I'm, I'm kind of appealing to counsel, uh, wish to make it clear that that is not our understanding in any way, shape, or form.
Think counsel's getting ready to address that.
I think probably what you want to do at this time is just memorialize the board's opposition to the motion that was made. You don't want to go anything further than that at this point. That'd be for future discussions.
Yeah.
Well, that would be fine, counsel. Thank you.
So do you want to amend your motion?
Yes, according to what counsel said.
Okay.
So the motion would be to go officially on record as opposing the motion that was proposed at the last CDA meeting?
That the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners is in opposition to it, yes.
Yeah. Did you want to second that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay. And Commissioner Murdoch, did you have any other comments or reports?
No, no, just so that you know that we, there's been some racial, regional solutions is conducting racial equity discussions around the state. There's one in our region that's being conducted by Courtney Crowell. It meets every Wednesday afternoon from three to four-thirty. And I'm doing it on behalf of the county and today will be our second session. So it's, it's a broad group of representatives. There, there is a Commissioner from every county in our region, plus a number of other individuals who are participating in the conversation. So just so you know, know it's happening.
Okay. It's happening. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Well, seeing as I'm out of coffee, I'm also out of comments. I don't have anything as well, so.
Oh, I better race down.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.